Good morning and welcome to those of you who are here with us in the Commissioners Auditorium and those who are out there watching us in the community. Let's have our roll call, please.
Report that you are all present.
Okay, thank you. Let us know when we need to switch from hand voting, if you will. I would now like to call in Commissioner Garris to do our invocation and Commissioner Johnson to do our pledge, if you'll stand.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this morning for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for this wonderful county that we are privileged to live in. We thank you for our state and for our nation. We pray that your richest blessings might be upon us, especially we'll be with this board this morning as we negotiate the issues that will impact our county. Help us to make those decisions that are best for the people that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name, amen.
Let us face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's vote, please. Oops, that's right. Okay, the next item is public address to the board. We don't have a...
Can somebody sign up for the public addresses?
Anybody signed up out there? No? Okay. That jumped up there. We haven't had it back close to the beginning of the meeting in a while. We'll ask our manager to give his manager's report now, please.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This morning, I have several items to report on. The next meeting dates will be February 20th at 6:00 PM and March 12th at 9:00 AM. Item B, want to make the board aware that the Bufford County manager, new manager, Russell Woodruff and I have been discussing, had an informal discussion about the possibility of them leasing bed space at our detention center for their purposes. They're looking at the possibility of either building their own, a new jail detention center, or looking at other bed options. And right now, we're just talking very formally. He's reporting back to his board where we're at. And right now, we're discussing the... They would really like for us to have video arraignment so they wouldn't have to have their judges come over. So I've made Sheriff Elks aware of this, and it's very informal, but didn't want it to be in the press and you not know about it. Would be an opportunity for us to possibly utilize additional space within our detention center of the excess capacity we have and also have some revenue stream that goes along with it.
All right, the finances, of course, money-wise, will we get the same amount there? We get the federal prison, same...
Well, right now, we get $70 per day for the federal prisoners. Now, that includes a transport fee or charge in there that we charge them. Obviously, we would not be transporting for Bufford County if this deal were to go down. So I was looking at maybe about $75 a day.
About Malacca services.
Whether it would include the medical and the food and so forth.
Just so...
I would bring this back to you, obviously, with that. If we come to terms on this, in terms of a formal agreement between Pitt County and Bufford County, again, as he's going to report back to his board, just wanted you to be aware that right now, it's just very informal discussions. It may not come about.
And no federal inmates would be...
No, no. It would be local, Bufford County inmates. Item C, Hurricane Irene. Obviously, this is an event that happened last fall. Just want you to be aware that we're in the closeout process with FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, on all of our projects. Right now, we're looking at a little less than $700,000 in reimbursements that we're getting in. Had a lot of meetings and discussions with them over the past couple of weeks to close this out, and we've gotten to a point where we feel like we're having a good closeout on this and are happy to report that. On item D, on the fire service district process, as the board is aware, we have a public hearing set for February 20th here in your chambers at 6:00 PM. We've had, we have four public forums scheduled, two of which have already occurred, two that will be occurring this week. The response to the forums has been positive. We've had a good number of people out to the first one. I believe we probably had about 40 out. The second one, we probably had about half of that or less. We also had a separate meeting with the fire chiefs on the Friday before the first public forum. Just wanting to make sure that they were updated, they know where we're at in the process. And I felt that that was very productive with myself, the county attorney, Noel Lee, Allen Everett, and just wanted them to be in the loop in terms of where we're headed with this project and to know the status of it. So we'll be staffing the additional two forums and we'll be coming to the, back to you with the public hearing coming up. Item E, want the board to be aware that we have launched the Pitt County Flag redesign contest. The press release was issued on that. Probably saw the article in the paper. We'll be contacting the schools and any other agencies that would want to, or any other individuals or public entities would want to participate in that. Item F, want the board to be aware of that the Pitt County Board of Health has received the 2011 Outstanding Board of Health Award. And I was made aware of this last week. And the award is in appreciation and recognition for the Pitt County Board of Health's contributions to public health in supporting the North Carolina law restricting the use of tobacco in restaurants and bars. Just want to ask me to make that aware to the board and the public. And with that, Madam Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I ask a question again. All right, on your five districts, I'd like to know what, how does it come in more than what you said, I guess, the man that...
Sure. What specifically would you like to know?
All right, how many, have you had two of them yet?
Yes, we've had two.
That's what I thought. How many people did you have to go to them? What kind of participation are you getting?
First one, we had roughly 40 people there. The second one, we probably had 15 to 20. We've had great press on this. The people who've been there are asking, you know, good questions as to why we're doing it, what's the process, how does it affect me? There's not been, as far as I know, and Noel, you might want to, Mr. James would like to entertain any of the questions.
Yeah.
I don't think there's been any negative comments that I'm aware of in totality. They've been just pretty much questioning the process and why are we doing what we're doing.
I think it's a big change, Noel Lee. Of course, you know that. It's going to affect a lot of people in Pitt County. We shouldn't just mention it, but they should understand what we are doing and why.
Yes, sir. At the first forum that was held at Aiden Griffin, there was about 40 people that did register. Like the manager said, most of the comments were positive. There was a lot of misunderstanding about what was taking place. Once it was explained to them, I think they were fairly comfortable with that. At Hope Middle School, there were 25 people, 25 or 26 that registered. Again, about the same thing. It was fairly positive. We will be at North Pitt tomorrow night, and then we'll be following up at Farmville Middle on Thursday night. I think Commissioner Smith attended both of those forums. I think he'll agree with that. I think it was a good presentation that we did have.
All right, and those people understand that don't live in the district now, that they're going to be taxed. Even though if they're 10 miles off, they'll still be taxed. They understand all of that, don't they?
That has been explained to them, yes, sir.
All right, and you're not getting any... Okay, that's what I'm...
Mr. Smith, would you like to say something?
The county staff had it well prepared, and it was a PowerPoint presentation. And at the two that I went to, I didn't hear no negative comments. Most people agreed that they had protection and they felt like it was due to help pay for it if it came to that.
Also, I went to the one at Hope, and I confirmed the statements that Commissioner Smith made. The one comment that I heard from a lady there that wasn't currently being taxed was she wondered why we didn't do it a long time ago. So I saw that the group at Hope was very supportive.
That's good.
Mr. Webb?
Noel, just to clear a couple of things, questions I've been getting and some misconceptions that are out there, I want to put a rest, that we are not doing this to take over the fire service.
No, sir. That is absolutely not any intent of the county.
That we are not taking their equipment, moving it from fire department to fire department. And we are not zeroing out their tax rate.
I think that is probably some of the misunderstanding.
That's what they believe.
Is that since you have a tax under the fire protection district side, that will have to be zeroed. You cannot do away with that. But the U.S. Commissioners will zero that, and then you will set the tax according to the budget request from the fire departments under the service district side.
I think some of the fear was that we were taking over, that we were going to drop the rates really low, and that there was going to be a lot of inequity going on.
And, and sir.
And I've been getting a lot of calls. I just wanted to put a rest here today that that is not the purpose.
That is not the case at all.
That this is just a legal action that has to happen for the taxes to be, to go out the full 10 miles.
I think the other thing, too, Commissioner Webb, is this was a request from some of the fire departments. And through our legal process, this is what needs to be done to try to meet those requests from those fire departments.
Thank you.
If I can add as well, through this process, the public forums are 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Folks can come in, float in, float out. 6 o'clock, there's a formal presentation that lays everything out with a PowerPoint presentation. The public has the opportunity to fill out a paper form and submit it there at the meeting. They can take the meeting, mail it back in. We also have a website with an email address set up specifically for this project. Folks can mail in their comments, email in their comments. We will compile all these comments and make sure you, as the governing board, receive these prior to the public hearing. We're trying to do this along the lines of exactly how we do a comprehensive land use plan update when we've gone out and did public forums and turned and mirrored that process, trying to be transparent before the public and really let them know the who, what, why, where, and when of this process. So just wanted to add that.
Mr. Owens?
The, I want to make sure that in all of this, that we do not deter the participation of volunteers, but we need to maintain a continuity that the volunteer people that continue to work will be able to have continued suggestions. I think that we need to stress the idea that rural fire departments have been by volunteers. And although the county is now coming in to assist, from whatever that might be, that the section quote "volunteers" are still a germane part of the fire protection.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Owens.
One more thing, you know, there are two departments that do not have any fire tax. And they, of course, are solely volunteers. But now, I for this, and we install these service districts, then the Board of County Commissioners can take and level a tax for those two districts if they so desire and if that county commissioner recommends it. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
That's what I thought. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much for answering those questions.
Madam Jim?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hammond.
At worst, is the rate for all the districts the same?
Commissioner Hammond, today of the 20 districts, you have 18 different rates because you have 18 different districts. Under the fire service districts, the new model, you would still have 20 separate different rates, depending upon what the tax base of each district is, what the budget is, what the request is, and what you set it as. We are not looking at a uniform rate across the county whatsoever. I mean, some, some folks are trying to liken this to the EMS tax, which is a 4.4 cent tax that goes across the entire service district, and that's one service district. Under this model, you'll still, you'll have 20 service districts, 18 which would have a rate, maybe 19 or 20, depending upon if you, if there's a request for a rate for Belvoir or Bethel. But pretty much what you have today is what you're going to have in the new model tomorrow. As you transition from the fire protection to fire service district, other than taxing those few people on the outer fringes, they're not being taxed today, that is really bottom line, the major difference you're going to have between today and tomorrow, if you go through with the service districts.
In reference to what Mr. Owens said, is the volunteers still going to be...
Yes, sir.
Major supporter of those rural departments?
We trust, we hope, and we pray because they are, they are the folks that provide that service in their rural, and we want them, desire them to continue to be just as actively engaged as volunteers. We do not see Pitt County government providing rural fire protection. We want, as county government, we want to assist to the volunteer fire departments in what they're doing, as we have done over the years. But we do not see county government getting involved in their day-to-day business or such. We would like to see the, the model that is currently being deployed out there for fire service to continue as is.
Well, we don't have no unfunded mandate from Raleigh doing relative to supplying or the service or paying for doing.
Nothing's changed in Raleigh to date. I'm not aware of any pending legislation that would change rural fire protection.
Ms. Hammond, I think the answer to your question, are the volunteer firemen still going to be there, firemen and firewomen? And are they the heart of this? The answer is yes. Let's move on to our next item, and if Mr. Smith and Mr. James and Mr. McGlone already asked, if you all will do the roll call, please. We've got the machinery fixed, the technology.
What you want, what you...
We want you to fix yourself as president, say yes and confirm. Thank you.
Just right now.
You got us, Madam Attorney? Okay. Kathy Booker is going to do our report of unpaid taxes for 2011.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item for report that you have is the report of unpaid taxes for the year 2011 that are liens on real property. And you also have the report with you that breaks out Pitt County and each of the five municipalities that we collect for. And then for historical purposes, you have comparison at the bottom of that page.
Okay.
One question.
Yes, sir.
That 5 million of unpaid for Pitt County, what percent of that do we expect to be collected?
Our goal is to come in above our collection rate of last year.
Which was?
95.
Okay, good, fine, thank you. That's what I thought. That's what I thought. Thank you.
I thought we always tried to get 97 point something.
Yes, sir, we always try to...
Try to get 100%. That's what we generally get.
Last year's rate fell to like 96.4. Our goal is to get back up at least to the 97 or higher collection percentage.
Yeah, I know that's what the...
And that's the goal, we just hope.
Goal ought to be 100%.
Oh, yeah, the goal is.
And that is the goal, actually.
It don't always work that way, too.
Unfortunately, bankruptcy and discount will keep us from ever getting at 100%.
Yeah.
And the second report that you have in front of you also is your collection report, and it will show you that, again, we are slightly ahead of last year. And every month, we strive to increase that and stay ahead.
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. No more questions?
You have the reevaluation complete for Pitt County for the year 2012 now?
I have a report in just a minute for you, and I'll reevaluate...
So you're going to come back with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Do we need a motion to accept these reports? I'll entertain one.
Sure.
Okay, let's vote. We got it, thank you. Our next report is from Viden Health, Dave McCray. You'll come forward, please, and welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Feels like old home week.
Yes.
I got nervous. The chair looked up at me when she said unpaid taxes, and I thought, oh my gosh, I need to check and be sure that daddy's paid all our taxes.
I don't see your name on this list.
Oh, good, thank you. It is very nice to be with you and be among friends, not only in front of me, but around the room behind me. Several of you know that Noel Lee's dad was on our board in the early days of the development of the Medical Center when, when I was on board. And several of you, of course, have helped us over the years. Commissioner James and Commissioner Smith were on the committee that hired me in 1975. You can blame them for everything I've done since then. I've been working for the last five or 10 years to fix all the problems I created in the early days and get ready for retirement. Somebody asked who the Motley Crue was behind me. I think Dave Womack is there, chairman of the board of Viden Health and Viden Medical Center. Arkini, whom all of you had a chance to meet a few minutes ago, is from Inglehart, and he's vice chair of the board. And if they came in, Phil Flowers, past chair of the board, is here. Kelly Barnhill, past chair of the board, is here. And Lawrence Davenport was going to try to swing by.
There he is. He's right over there.
He happens to be over there. I can't count the times he has loaded me in the pickup truck and said, we're going for a ride. And I ended up in Eugene James' place for a talking to. So we've had that done many times, haven't we? We've had a good time. And thank you all for being here today, and thank you for inviting me. I used to do these reports more often. We had the transfer agreement signed in 1998, and that began to change the way we related to the county. It was more formal and official. We had rating agencies and underwriter counsel and bond counsel looking over our shoulder and wanting to be sure that we did things just right because there were other people interested in our success and the decisions that we made. And since that time, we've been providing you with a written report on the transfer agreement, which you, I think, have received, a county manager should have received. And I'll talk about that just in a moment. I thought I'd also speak to the Fitch Report, which was in the newspaper, and a bit about the name or the brand, and then governance, how we operate, and how your board functions, and then a few closing comments. And if I can do all that in five minutes and leave the remaining time for you to ask questions, we'll be in good, good shape. The transfer agreement identifies monies paid in exchange and some, some required guidelines that the hospital system operates by, and in particular, Viden Medical Center. And I thought I'd give you just a brief update on this year's report and then aggregate for you since 1998, when we were able to convert under the 131 E8 statute with your vote and agreement. Annual debt service requirements for the organization are required to be at 1.5. We're at 4.4 in 2011. The annual cushion ratio, and we've got finance people who can give you more detail on the interpretation of the numbers, required to be 1.4, and we're at 11.6 in 2011. The annual payment in lieu of taxes this year, this past year, was almost $1.8 million. And the Medicaid reimbursement number to assist with the county's burden on Medicaid was right at $600,000 in the past year. And then, of course, the school nurse program, of which we're all proud, and I'm particularly proud of it, costs us $1.1 million, just over. If you add that up since 1998, you come up with the original $30 million, which was paid over, I believe, three years, 15 and 7 and 1/2 and 7 and 1/2. But since that time, there's been a payment in lieu of taxes of $20.3 million, Medicaid reimbursement of $7.3 million, school nurse program of $7.7 million. If you add all of it together, the county has received the benefit of $65.3 million since 1998. There is also, for the benefit of the entire region as well as Pitt County, a significant carry of indigent care in 2011. That number is 172 million, and total indigent care since 1998 is $1.1 billion that the health system and the Medical Center have carried. I think we've got a positive and good, strong transfer agreement, a relationship that benefits Pitt County, but it also allowed, the transition allowed the health system back in, starting in 98, to reach out into the region. We couldn't do that as a public entity. We were able to invest money in the region, to acquire hospitals and physician practices, and to invest our reserves other than treasuries and cash. It's all been good for us. We think we've been good stewards, both of the money and of our mission. And I wanted to speak to two or three other things built on that. I'll try to stop in a few minutes and take your questions. Several of these topics meshed together, so if you'll bear with me, I'll try to quickly go through them. It was a Fitch update report. You know that Moody's and Standard and Poor are the other two major ones. You deal with them as well as we do. One of my proudest moments was a few years ago when we achieved double A-minus rating in all three agencies. That's unusual in healthcare. Less than 5% of hospitals and health systems in the country achieve that rating. We've been there twice over our years. An A-plus rating, the next level, is still very good. Less than 20%, about 15, 16% achieve that level. We have always balanced our need for cash and cash reserves to offset our debt and to be good stewards of the money. But we balance that with the need to invest in healthcare services, both in this community and throughout the region. So we always teeter between having adequate reserves and having adequate services and expansion in the region. One of our strengths is market share in the region and the ability to reach out and support and serve the region. By the way, one of our strengths is always considered to be the board's strength that we have that support and guide us as well, and we're very proud of that as well. The Fitch Report didn't change anything other than their own report. We have a tendency to get our cash built up, and then we go out and we acquire another hospital, and they put us on the watch list or a negative outlook for a while, and then we come back and show that we can make good use of having helped that hospital. Every hospital we've acquired in all of our years has gotten to the point, not only of cash flow, but of break even and making money for the organization, even the smallest one. And I'm very proud of Bertie County and the hospital in Windsor. It was the first critical access hospital in the country built from scratch, and it pays its own way and pays its own bills. We're proud of that. Let me migrate now to the brand or the name. You've seen all of it in the paper. It's been everywhere. And my wife said last night, if she hears that ad on TV one more time, she's going to throw me out of the house. Our marketing experts tell us that you have to do that to get it built in so people know who we are, but I'll look forward to changing that one myself. Some of you have heard me say that we had Anissa Davenport do a study, she and her marketing team, a few, three years ago. And that study showed that we were known by 42 different names. Doctors' offices, hospitals, wellness centers, home health, hospice, and the other entities. And if you went to even several of our organizations or entities, you might not, might not even have realized that you were in one that was owned, controlled, managed by the same entity. In this day and age, one of the strongest marketing tools being used, not only by healthcare, but as you saw in the Super Bowl last night by almost everybody, is having a consistent and common brand name. And we made the decision, with our board looking over our shoulder and helping us, that it was time to fix that issue. And so we've spent three years doing that, the outcome of which was Viden Health and Viden Medical Center. The Medical Center in Greenville is a cornerstone. It's the foundation. It's the flagship of the system. It's a majority of the business. And unless we had changed that name to a Viden Medical Center, we still would not have been known as one organized unified entity. Our staff talk about the young lady who had the shark bite out at the Outer Banks last summer. She was carried to Outer Banks Hospital, our hospital, x-rayed with x-rays reviewed by our radiologist, transported by the helicopter to Greenville, seen, of course, here in Greenville by doctors from our organization. The medical record transferred instantly throughout the process, all under one organization. But back then, known as eight to 12 organizations, if you had followed the newspaper reports. We tried to fix that, and we did. And if you'll give us a little time, we're convinced that this brand change will be good for everybody, including Pitt County and the citizens of the region. We'll be known as a strong, strong health system, and as competition in healthcare gets stronger and stronger, we'll be able to fend that off and to fulfill our mission of service for the people of eastern Carolina. You can make the same argument for governance. How does your board operate? In 1998, in the transfer agreement that you signed with us, you allowed us, for the future sometime, to create a smaller health system board. And the board has been going to meetings and hearing about the best governance practices and the fact that many entities like ours had such a large board that it was hard to make decisions quickly, hard to get people together. And among other suggestions, one of the strongest was to have a smaller board. The transfer agreement allowed for that. We had a consultant help us. We took a number of months for the board to review a variety of options, including having fewer committees. We had 13 committees that we dealt with and six different boards, several of which you've been on. And the feeling was that we needed to reduce that and get it down to three boards and only five or six committees. The board has done that. The composition of the health system board comes from, only comes from current active board members of the Medical Center here in Greenville, or people like Lawrence Davenport, and I'll point at him because I can see him over there, who have been on the board in the past. We do not and cannot put anyone who hasn't previously been appointed by Pitt County or by the UNC system. system in Chapel Hill. And that's the composition, and that's how we will fill the talent pool going forward. It will allow us to use better business practice in order to pick people with the right skill at the time that we need it as we deal with healthcare in a competitive age, and healthcare that is most surely going to aggregate to larger and larger scale. We need the kinds of folks sitting in this room who understand that. Yes, sir, Commissioner?
Mother Nan Bryston brought me a country dinner the other day. She's from over Snow Hill. She said, "How many more emergency rooms you gonna have over there?"
In Snow Hill?
She's outside of Snow Hill.
Yeah, yeah.
She stays out there where they call institute.
Right. Well, as you know, there's a history of trying to serve Greene County, and we have physicians who are able to serve on our medical staff as of a number of years ago, even though it's outside of Pitt County and using the distance. There are things we are trying to do, both within Pitt County and in Greene County, to give more immediate care, walk-in care, if you like, to support and help the local physicians in each community. So I think you'll see more being done in that same way.
Dave?
Yes, ma'am?
We're gonna let you finish, and then we're gonna have comments and questions, I know. But would you give the percentage of the appointments, the Pitt County appointments?
Yes, I was gonna close with that, yes.
Just so the citizens can hear that?
Right, right. You all know, as commissioners, that our, our two main boards, in fact, the ECH Board as well, has always been populated since the '94 agreement was re-signed with a 55-45 ratio. So 55% of the board has been and will continue to be, by requirement, Pitt County appointees and 45% from the UNC system. So an 11-person board, the new health system board, will have six county appointees, either current or past members of the Biden Medical Center Board, and five from the UNC system, either current or past appointees to the Biden Medical Center Board. And that's the process that will be used. Let me do a couple of summary comments that I think will put everything I've said so far in a, in a context, and then I'll be glad to answer your questions. I couldn't come before you without bringing some information that we all appreciate, which will just remind us, remind me, having been here for now almost 37 years, of from where we've come, as they say. I'm not sure any of us had the vision to know what would happen in the future and the wealth of services we would have in Pitt County, as fine as any large academic and tertiary institution in the country, but in one of the smaller communities by population size, to have that benefit right here in our backyard without the congestion, despite the criticisms we get for traffic lights and, and roads. We have 196 admissions every day. We have almost 1,400 outpatient services provided to people every day. We have 822 emergency department visits every day. We have 233 nautical air miles every day from our three helicopters, and 1,900 ground miles on our various mobile intensive care units every day. We have 21 babies born every day. Our patient satisfaction scores are in the top 10% in the nation at Biden Medical Center. And our optimal care scores, meaning the delivery of care being done right and precisely, is 95%, one of the top in the country. There are more than 800 people reached every day through our community outreach programs, through our foundation, and in other ways. We hire 200 to 400 new employees every year to come into the system, and 65% of those come to Medical Center in Greenville. We have year-round 300 medical students, 350 medical residents in Greenville, and 1,100 nursing and other students who are in Medical Center in Greenville primarily. And this is just sidebar. We have 52,000 outgoing phone calls every day and 150,000 emails every day to deal with. It just gives you a small, small sense of the scale. You see the $1.5 billion net revenue business on the ads. You see the 11, the 10 hospitals, the 11,000 employees and some of that other data. But we thought you might find it interesting to hear some of this smaller data. And my final comment I want to tell you about is the leadership. I've been here a long time, and I'm moving into retirement over the next couple of years. And one of the things the board asked me to do was to at least start the process of bringing in the next generation of leaders. And I've done that, and that's in their hands. And of course, I stand out of the way while they do their work now to make decisions about the future. But I must tell you, and I'll start with the Medical Center in Greenville, I could not be more proud of not only the 11,000 employees, but also, and also, the leadership that we have. Steve Lawler is the president of Biden Medical Center in Greenville and has been for five years. He's a local boy, gentleman who served in the military and the medical service and Army, and retired from there and came home. And he ran our regional health system, and he's been running the Medical Center in Greenville now for five years. And he's been serving chili on the United Way with several of you, and doing other things. And he does an excellent job. He is the rising chairman of the North Carolina Hospital Association, an important job for the state. And he has recently been the chairman of the Mid-Atlantic Voluntary Hospitals of America organization, serving 12 states in this mid-Atlantic area as the leader. And he's done many other things. He's superb. He's engaged. He's a local gentleman, and he cares deeply about what we do, both for Pitt County and for the region. Dr. Dave Herman is the hire that you all know about, and you've read about in the paper. Dr. Herman was recruited starting a little over a year ago as board leaders. The full board and I began work on future. He comes to us from Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota. He is a physician. He spent the last 23 years there. He's from that area. But he spent the last 12 years in various roles of administrative leadership. Mayo System has a rotating system of taking their most senior doctors, and they rotate to run the hospitals, to run the physician practices, to do the research work, to do the outreach work, and each key element of the work of that organization. They not only have 70 health locations in the upper Midwest, but as you may know, they also have hospitals in Jacksonville, Florida, and in Phoenix, Arizona. And Dr. Herman has been the equivalent of the chief operating officer of that system, including their hospitals and outlying in other areas. He found us, and we found him, and we knew right away that we were a good match. He's been with us now as president and chief operating officer for about eight months. I have said many times, the best days work I've done in all of my career were the days that I put Steve Lawler in at Pitt and that we brought Dr. Dave Herman to town. The board will make decisions about the future, about how we operate, how they make decisions, and who will be their leadership team. My job is to keep things going and set the day to go forward so that we will be the best quality anywhere in the country, and we're virtually there. We'll have the best workforce. We're virtually there. And that we will be able to protect the services that we provide to the citizens of eastern Carolina, and we're virtually there. These things that I've told you about are very important. They're necessary. The board would not have made those decisions if they weren't critical to our future. They believe, and I believe that they are, and I hope you will trust the board that you've appointed and trust me as we've continued to work together, you and I, for all of these years going forward. Thank you for inviting me, and let me answer your questions.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And we look forward to maybe continuing the annual report face-to-face like we had done in the past. It's not required, but we've missed you. Okay.
Thank you. As long as I'm here, I'll be glad to come with my board's support, and they and others will make the deals down the road. But I enjoy very much being here and speaking with you, both privately and in your public sessions.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain, yes, Mr. Lawhorn first.
I want to say that the citizens of Pitt County should be very proud with the leadership team that we have in place, especially as the board of trustees, and, and the transparency that the, that the leadership team and the board brings. One of the things I want to sort of give kudos to Dave Womack as our, the, the chairman of the trustee. He's doing a great job, and he, he's also open and to improve diversity on the board. And, and I, and I think that's a plus. And certainly, you look, as mentioned, with our new to-be chairman, Art Kenny, he's out in the audience, and he's going to be taking over in 2013, I think. And then you have, it was mentioned already about Steve Lawler and Dave Herman. I think that the county, citizens of Pitt County is fortunate to, to see some great things happening in the future with Biden Medical Center. And I'm proud to be part of that as we continue to show progress in the area of our medical concerns for, for Pitt County citizens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawhorn. Mr. James?
Well, David, you know you're gonna get some questions from me, don't you? I, of course, born and raised in Pitt County, believe in the citizens of Pitt County and so forth. One of the biggest criticisms that I've had lately is how much was spent on the signs and so forth. And I know some of them don't want me to ask this question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, because it's asked of me. About how many million has been spent on changing the signs and so forth that you have said? Because I know and you know, at the beginning, it wasn't that name. It had to be changed, what, two times?
Right.
Because it was the wrong name.
Right.
But we won't go there. But about how much money was spent pertaining to, the reason I'm asking you this is because Pitt County schools and everything is, we're in such bad shape, money-wise.
Right. For those of you who don't follow the implication of the name we could not use, we did try to simply abbreviate the words that we had in University Health Systems of Eastern Carolina. We could not trademark or copyright protect that name, and we thought we could with UHS. And we weren't able, as you know from reading the newspaper, to protect that name either. So when the board agreed that it was time for us to find a name that was protectable, we agreed that that had to be principle number one, that we couldn't go through having a name that others could piggyback on or use or mimic. And that was partly how we went down that path. Some of you have heard numbers thrown out, even as high as $5 million. But what you need to understand is, that includes the ongoing marketing that we would have been doing anyway with whatever name that we had. And so I take that number, and I would subtract $2 to $3 million from it on what we would have spent. But yes, we did, or are having to repaint some signs, buses, as an example. We put stickers on. We're using the same colors, so it's a little easier. It's not as expensive. The helicopters, as you may know, if we repaint them from scratch, that's very expensive. But we can put decals on them that will show the Biden Health name. So yes, you'll hear those numbers. Our board is aware, and we knew in advance that we would have some expense to make this change. But we believe if you take that and look at it over the next three and five and 10 and 20 years, it will be money very well spent that will allow us to show clearly that we are a single, unified, organized entity, from doctors to hospitals to wellness centers, to the referral hospital here in Greenville, and even to the outlying hospitals in Outer Banks and in Duplin County and elsewhere. A very important transition. But yes, there's some expense.
A lot of expense. The next thing that comes to me, the hundreds of thousands of pounds of paper that's been, is being shedded. They've been doing it now for weeks. That's all they're doing is going around collecting all the paper and threading it. And this, we won't go to that. Why wasn't it planned that most of this paper would be used? You didn't have to go there and thread it all?
In fact, starting-
That was the question that was asked of me.
Sure. Starting several months ago, we did pass word that we wanted people not to order new paper supplies until we had a new name. So most areas, most departments have been able to wean down their supply of paper. It's not possible to do it exactly, and invariably you end up with departments that have to discard things. But it's much less than the rumor mill would make you think.
Yeah, it's not. These people going to the other hospitals, and they're bringing it all here, and they're doing all this threading. But that's-
Sure.
But the next thing, of course, I, I'm for Pittmore. Well, I always probably say Pittmore Hospital.
That's all right.
I know it is. But there, and it has been very successful. But you know, as I look at it, and of course, it comes out in the paper, they made $49 million. And then these people come and they ask me, "Well, Mr. James, how come all the bills are so high?" And I can't answer. But I do tell them this. When you, when you go to the doctor, you want the best care you can get, and no matter what it costs, you're gonna do it. But I, even though I have lots more questions-
Sure.
But the main thing is, over the years, we're going, I think we, your board of trustees are going to have to be more involved sometimes. I was one of the probably longest, if you go back and get my record, the longest trustee that's been at Pitt Memorial Hospital.
I believe you were.
That's right.
You had a good run together.
For many, many years, I served on it.
Yeah.
And I think Pitt Memorial probably has gotten so big that, and so many committees, that it's hard to keep your hands on it. I know that. But I do want them to know and you to know, even though I'm kind of negative at times, I'm very proud of what you do. I really am. You're doing a wonderful job, and the citizens of eastern North Carolina, they deserve that.
Thank you for that, for that statement.
But-
Commissioner, I have to speak to this, and you've heard me say these numbers. We did a study several years ago, when a patient comes in the hospital here in Greenville, in contact with how many different people. And it's about 125 different people. And you want every person to be nice and polite, and yet the patient and family are in the most stressful situation they could be in almost any aspect of life. And you want the care delivered to be exact and just right. And those nurses can range from being 22 years old to being 60 years old, or my age. And they handle medicines that are very expensive, can cost thousands of dollars, a dose even. It has to be done right every time. It is a very expensive business. As you, if you keep up with the late, the press, some believe that hospital expense cannot go down. What we have to do is find a way to keep people out of our hospitals, keep people healthier on their own, and doing the things that are much better investment. You talked about your health department. You've got one of the finest in the, anywhere in the state and elsewhere. We need our health departments filling a stronger role in helping keep people out of hospitals. A neonatal baby can cost a quarter of a million to a million dollars. But for $1,000, for $100, for doing the right things at home and in the health department, you can prevent that admission and that premature baby in the first place. That's where the expense of healthcare is, and that's how we can reduce it. We're not going to reduce the fact that it takes six people to monitor a bed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And you multiply that by the fourth or fifth largest hospital in the state, and you get the numbers you do. Sorry, and thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. I'm gonna move on because we're leaving on you down there. Mr. Smith?
Yeah. I was sitting here thinking about, over the years, how this hospital has grown in Greenville. And I was thinking about where it got its beginning, from the people of Pitt County, in that they voted in a $9 million bond issue, a little over $9 million. And everyone said, "You're gonna break the county. This is gonna break the county." If it hadn't happened, the county would probably be broke today. And I was thinking about how the hospital had grown over the years. What caused this? And when you get back down to it, when I was on the hospital board, I was amazed at the caliber, caliber of people that was appointed to the board of trustees on the hospital. These were men and women that had vision, and they dedicated thus being to having this hospital to work out. I don't think no one knew at the time in his seventies how this hospital would have grown to what it is today on medical care in the eastern part of the state, except maybe one man, Mr. Jack Richardson was the administrator of the hospital, and he's told me many a times that, "Evan, you'll never see it stop growing in your lifetime." I don't know where he got his vision from, but he was right. But if it's to succeed in years to come, the same- But if it's to succeed in years to come, the same thing that has made it great up until now will have to be carried out by the next and the next Board of Trustees. These men and women that has visions that are appointed to this board is very beneficial. And the recruiting process, the recruiting adopters and the nurses to care for the people that comes to these various hospitals in the eastern part of the state will ensure that this medical facility will continue to grow. And I can foresee in the future that one day it will be one of the, if not now, the flagships of the United States medical facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ephraim. Mr. Owens, I have you down.
I think everybody said about what I intended to say, but you look at the chairman of the boards that we have here present today and what they've contributed. Of course, Dave was the head man. Dave alludes to the fact that he's going to retire. I told Dave the other day that I had a lot of trust in him, and this board has too. But I don't know about the ones down the line, whether we're going to have that trust or not. And we hope it is, but I don't want the group to lose sight of the fact that the local representations, I don't want it to get to the point that people, the governance is going to be to the extent that you cannot have good people that will want to serve on the board like Lartz, Dave, Phil, JB, and all of those. If they cannot contribute, they're not going to want to serve on that board. And we've been very fortunate to have these people to do that. And I want it to stay so that it would be still a place that will bring people in to be supportive of what you and your staff do, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
One question.
Mr. Garris has a question.
Yes, you said there were 11,000 employees. That's the Vida system, right?
Right.
How many of those jobs are in Pitt County?
Between 6,000 and 7,000.
Okay, thank you.
And that doesn't count the medical school with its 14, 1500. It doesn't count the private practice physicians. There are about 300 or 400 in private practice, another 300 or 400 in the medical school. We now have over 300 physicians and advanced practitioners that we employ, and our projections are that we could have 600 over the next several years. Because physicians and advanced practitioners would prefer to work for an organization in this day and age than to be in private practice like my dad, a surgeon, did 50 years ago.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, maybe you let those former chairmen of the board stand so everybody could recognize who we're talking about.
I would like that. Some of them raised their hands, but they didn't stand up if you'll do that. And Mr. Womack, if you'll raise two hands, because he's our president chair and our stepping up chair, you'll raise one and a half hands. Okay? Thank you all for being here and supporting-
Some of our former commissioners, too.
And I hope all of you, all of you who came with Dave, and we really appreciate you doing that, recognize the fact that the Pitt County Commissioners are on board. I think you've heard some testimonies here that y'all haven't heard in a long time. And a large portion of that comes from the fact that the local, we represent the local citizens, and we have been given the task of appointing 55% of the people to the 20-member board. And 55% of the Vida board will also be people that came from the Pitt County Commissioners' appointments. So the connection is there. Please don't lose sight of it. We are not the enemy. We are probably your biggest proponents. And please remember that, and please keep us involved. Thank you very much. Thank you again.
One thing I want to say that we haven't mentioned, the Brody School of Medicine has been very instrumental in the growth of Pitt Memorial Hospital. It never has been mentioned.
He mentioned it just a few minutes ago.
Well, he did.
We do often.
We don't mention it enough.
Yeah. Well, that has become a much bigger thing now. When you go to board meetings, you hear all of that, much more than you used to.
They work together, and that's the key to it.
Okay, Mr. Smith?
In closing, the night that we hired Dave McGrady at the hospital, I told him, I said, I don't know what kind of administrator you will be, but if you can talk your way on it, you'll be good.
Thank you. I'm leaving.
Thank you, Dave, and thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I noticed the absence of women out there, but anyway, we won't hold that against you. Okay. And if you all, if you would like to be excused, you may, it doesn't matter. You can stay and hear the rest of this. The ABC Board, Teresa Campbell.
Good morning, Chairman Ward, Vice Chair Garris, and members of the board. I'm here this morning to give a brief overview of our second quarter numbers. And basically, I'm going to be discussing our sales, give a comparison of the fiscal year 2011 versus 2012, give the distributions for the second quarter of 2011 versus 2012, and finally, a summary of our financial position for the six months ended 12/31/2011. Okay, right here on the first slide, I have our gross sales. If you'll notice the change, we increased sales as we have in the past 20 years, every year. Retail sales increased $241,949.55. Mixed beverage sales, which is the sales to the bars and restaurants and things such as that, increased $15,407.96. And our mixer sales were down a little, which is the little 1% alcohol that we sell to make drinks with in the liquor stores. So basically, our total dollar change for the second quarter 2011 versus 2010, increase of $254,984.46. Next, we'll move on to the second quarter comparison. If you'll notice that our change in net assets before distributions, the second quarter 2012 was $537,612.42. After you deduct the law enforcement of $69,000, the alcohol education of $28,841.59, and the 3.5% profit distribution to the Pitt County, which was $110,228.98. And to working capital, we put back $164,732.64. The additional profit distribution that we made to Pitt County was $164,771.2. Distributions. Beverage price support for 2011 versus 2012. If you'll notice, it was up in 2012. This is actually the nickel penny tax that we pay on a monthly basis. And for the second quarter of 2012, it was $15,360.76. The total distribution, profit distribution was $275,000 even, which comes to $290,360.76. And on our last page here, I think you have a copy of revenue and expenses. Was that given to you all? Do you have a copy of that? Okay. Well, that's fine. I'll just, I'll basically give you an overview of what it is. For the six months ended 12/31/2011, our change in net assets before profit distributions was $717,343.1. Profit distribution for the first quarter was a total of $275,000, which brought the change in net assets to $442,343.01. Additional profit distribution in second quarter was $275,000. And profit retained for working capital was $167,343.1. So basically, this is where we are as of the end of the six months. And I'd like to say in closing that our goal is still to cut expenses, to maximize our profits, so we can give additional profit distribution to the county. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Teresa, thank you. Mr. James?
Yes. Where did you get the 3.5% that comes from Pitt County? How did that figure come about?
That comes from the statute. It's the required mandatory distribution that's required by the statute of North Carolina.
Who did that? I mean, I've never been involved, and I know that's caught my eye, the 3.5%, Mr. Harridge.
The General Assembly dictates that to counties, to ABC boards, to pass that back.
So the state of North Carolina gives that. They still want to ask, did you, did you all give your employees a raise last year?
We did.
You're not planning on this year, are you?
We haven't discussed that yet.
Well, let's say, let's don't do it. I mean, money is tight.
I'll pass that along to you.
And we'll try to find it. The next thing, I think we've got better uses for it. The thing that I'm concerned with also, law enforcement.
Yes, sir.
We've got a good sheriff's department. And it keeps getting larger and larger, which takes the money from the schools and so forth every year. I know you're kind of ready, because you know where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir.
I, wow, why can't the sheriff do his job and save some of that money?
Well, actually, a small percentage of our funds go to law enforcement.
Well, it was what, I bet, was it 200 some thousand?
That was the amount budgeted for the entire year. That takes care of salary.
Yeah, that's not a small amount of money.
Well, it's for the whole department. It pays for, that takes care of everything. And our guys, the law enforcement officers are out in the stores. They're able, if we've got a store that's got a lot of people in it-
Yeah.
-we can get them, they go out there and lock the doors, make sure everybody's safe. And I don't know if the sheriff's department has the manpower to be able to do that.
Well, the, what, the reason I'm concerned about it, because I know the sheriff's people, the deputies, they go in all these stores, they are looking at them and so forth, every day, they're in stores. And I don't know what they need, would need any more training to do that or not. I just don't know. But anyway, is, I'm trying to, I know one thing, things are not going to get any better. The sheriff's department needs more money, and I know we need more money. So we've got to look at ways that we can cut back. And I took notice, everything on that was up, revenue was up.
Yes, sir.
Not a thing was down. So that means we can probably get over that $1,200,000.
Let's look at that later on.
Okay, but don't forget that now.
Yes, sir.
That 1, 2 is not a magic number that we need to stop on. You understand that, don't you, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir, I do, Mr. James. Anybody else? Okay, Teresa, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the report and your goals.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Good to see your report where there's been an increase.
Exactly. We like that.
It is.
And to hear the three goals. Yes, Kathy Booker is back with us to give us a reevaluation update. And really, very quickly, I saw a longer version of this. This is going to be a shorter version.
Very short.
Okay, very shorter version, in which Kathy gave this presentation to the Town and Gown Committee, which is the university and law enforcement and the town and all of that. Anyway, you did a great job. I just want the citizens to know that, and thank you. I was proud of it.
What I'm here for today is to give you an update on the process of where we are actually in the revaluation process. The field work has been completed, and we are now in the process, after doing the merge over to the revaluation file, we are in the edit process right now. We will continue the edit process. We, through the edit process, we identified a certain, a number of parcels that we want to take a second look at, or some that didn't exactly merge over like we thought they should have. And this is just part of the normal edit process. And that will go on all this week. We have been doing that right now. And where we run what we call our end of year final merge on Friday. And then we will have a chance to look at that, to make sure that all of the parcels look in sync between the cam file and the revaluation file. And then we will send a file to mail the notices out. And the notices, revaluation notices are due to be mailed out on the 20th. At this time, when we run that file, then at that time, I will be able to give you some better estimates of valuation at that time.
Okay. Any questions?
So you still don't know-
Mr. James?
What, how much drop we're going to have, percentage-wise?
We know there is a percentage decrease, but at this, till we can run the final file, we can't tell you a number, a hard and fast number.
Well, how are we going on this budget then, if we're talking about this money?
Commissioner James, I think we can tell you, as we've told you a year ago, we anticipated a 5% to 6% drop. Like the number that we have, the range we have put out there as of recent is about 4% to 5%, 1% less than what we originally said, 5% to 6%, now 4% to 5%. Kathy, will, when will you be able to tell the municipalities as well as county government what our base drop will be? Will that be this Friday?
No, actually, we want to take, when we run the end of the year, we want to look at the edit reports again to make sure we don't have any other processes that we need to adjust or clean up. And during the week of the 13th to the 18th is when we're preparing to send the notice file out. And we will have those numbers prior to the notice going out on the 20th.
Obviously, the cities are really hankering for that number as they work on their budget, and so does the county. We originally had identified this Friday as being the date we could let the municipalities know. And through the month of January, you know, they've been pushing to get that information. So the sooner we can get that, helps us as county government, helps them as municipalities. I hope we could get it to them this Friday, because I've kind of promised them they would have that, so.
The 20th of February, you're talking about?
That's when the notices go out. We run the end of year process on the 10th.
So then we should have a fairly good assessment-
Mm-hmm.
-as to what it will be.
Yes, sir.
But how does the bankrupt sales, how does that figure in?
Foreclosures, we are, by those North Carolina general statutes, we have to arrive at fair market value. And foreclosures are not fair market value. So those are not sales that we can look at. They will, in essence, help to drive the market down on the overall picture. But a foreclosure sale is not an arms-length transaction. And per North Carolina general statutes, we cannot use a foreclosure sale in our sales analysis. We study all the sales.
Mr. James, we included an article by the School of Government on that very, very subject, and they were saying exactly what Ms. Booker is saying, that foreclosures are not a market, a normal arms-length market transaction. However, I think it did go on on the end of that article to state that if you had a neighborhood area that the majority of all the sales were foreclosures, then kind of by default, then that might set the comparisons.
It will drive the market value down.
Right. So, but normally, it's the arms-length transactions that create the comparisons they're using for reval.
That was a good article that you put in our package-
Yes, it was excellent.
-that gave you the true value. Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Hamon wants your attention.
Oh, Mr. Hamon, I'm sorry. I need to sit back. I'm sorry.
I want to know what's being done about the one that's underwater.
Well, in terms of the mortgages being underwater, folks owing more-
Yeah, where they owe more on the house than the value of the house.
Are you talking about a short sale, sir?
No, he's talking about a current mortgage. If somebody owns a property and they owe more on the property than they could sell it for today, there's nothing that county government is doing to address or resolve that. There's been talk in Washington of a mortgage bailout type program, but that really does not affect our revaluation process or how we assess and collect taxes in Pitt County, or any county in North Carolina.
The statute requires us to use arms-length transactions, which is a sale between a willing buyer and a willing seller.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion-
Motion to approve the concerned agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Bryan and Mr. Elliott are going to give us some-
Sure.
The plans for the budget for 12/13.
To the podium, I'll kick this off. Annually, as we come before you at this time of year in the month of February, as we start anticipating the developing the next fiscal year budget for 12/13, 2012, 2013, there's a number of items that we ask you to look at and consider in terms of your mission, vision, values, and goal statements. And as Ms. Bryan comes forward, if you'll look on page 36 of your agenda- And as Ms. Bryan comes forward, if you'll look on page 36 of your agenda, we have the current mission statement, vision statement, value statement, and goals. Right now, the goals that are being proposed is continuation of the existing goals you have, that we have used as a guiding, as a guide in terms of developing annual budget process. At this point in time, I would recommend as manager that you continue to go forward with those goals unless you, as a board, have any suggestions to tweak those or readjust those.
Any ideas? Okay, we can just move on?
We'd like you to formally.
Formally.
Make a motion that we approve the standard mission, vision, values, and goals.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Okay, and then that passes unanimously. And if you could also, just for the record, confirm by hand your items for consent. Those in favor? Thank you very much, we'll mark that as unanimous as well.
Okay, thank you.
There's a second element to this budget item, and I'll let Melanie cover this, that's dealing with the proposed capital improvement plan. We've done some legwork on this, and Melanie, if you want to present that.
Every year in December, we, while we recognize it's a constrained budget process this year, we do ask the departments to identify their needs, just so that they are on your radar screens. Those projects that are at the top of the chart tend to be your recurring, whether it's the $750,000 you have typically given the Board of Ed, or the $75,000 that you typically give to Pitt Community College for capital items. The economic development projects are things like the Woodridge Sewer that you have made long-term commitments to. We have the vehicle replacement request back in there, just to, as I said, let you know that's going on. As you know, you have agreed on behalf of Pitt Community College, you are advanced funding the architectural and engineering work for their Vernon White building. And as part of the EMS budget every year, we try to replace a couple of trucks, whether it's through the purchase of new vehicles or remounting existing vehicles. The projects at the bottom, below the line, are the items that the departments have put out there, should you find a way to fund it that they would like to see done. We also look out at a 10-year window, so that it's just, like I said, on the radar, so you know they're out there. And the projects that they've asked for, that we do not have any funding stream for, range from a storage building to a gym at the park, at the district park, to in-car cameras for the sheriff's department. But those are just projects out there, so you would be aware of them. Doing a long-term capital look, just like mission, vision, values, and goals, is a requirement for the GFOA award. So we do bring this forward every year, just to keep you noticed, I guess is a good word.
Okay. Do you want us to approve this?
This is more just information. If you see anything here you'd like to speak to us about, we'll bring this back to you formally as part of the development of the budget and the budget workshops.
Any questions about any of these items? Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Bryan, Mr. Elliott. And Scott, if you'll, is Melanie going to?
Yes, we're going to do this together.
Okay, we've got a team here, okay.
So the next item is consider current year budget adjustments to recognize reduction in the revenue estimates of the current year and the county's use of fund balance. This is kind of a follow-up item, not kind of a follow-up item, this is a follow-up item to the budget workshop that was held, I believe it's January the 26th, in which we identified that come June 30th of the current year, calendar year 2012, that unless we make some modifications to the current year budget, we will probably, we will spend down an estimated $1.3 million of additional fund balance. In order to preserve our fund balance position, especially as we start moving into the development of next year's budget, we thought it was important and almost imperative to come back before you with a recommendation of how, with a plan not to spend down fund balance, since we have spent down fund balance in the past two years. When the information was presented to you on the 26th, we identified that currently we have about 12.07% fund balance as of June 30th, 2011, and we were still identifying about a little less than that next year, if we did nothing, of about 12.02%, I believe were the numbers. The reason it doesn't change that much is because the overall budget number, the advisor number, actually lessens. But we still feel that it's important that we keep the dollar value of fund balance preserved, because A, in next year's budget, we're going to have to reduce the amount of appropriated fund balance, that plug, from what we're using right now, is about $3.5 million, down to about $2 million, in order not to spend any in fiscal year 12/13. So what we've done is, if you look in on page 40 of your agenda package, and I'm going to let Melanie run down this with you, but we've identified how we would like to try to attempt to preserve as much fund balance as we can by June 30th of this current year. And Melanie, if you can run through this, through the board with this?
Yeah. On this chart, we start with the premise that at adoption, our budget was roughly $107 million. In the workshop, we identified sales tax earnings, I mean, interest rate, or interest earnings, sales tax proceeds, and then the economically driven revenues like permits, inspections, register of deeds fees related to stamps, not coming in as budgeted. And then we had the federal inmate revenue that was coming in over budget. To look at, in the totality of the general funds, $107 million, where were we going to see drops, or revenues that didn't come in on target, and where would we see gains or revenues that came in over budget? And we talked in the workshop about a net revenue shortfall in the general fund of $1.2 million. $1.2 million is slightly more than 1% of our original budget. So if you were going to, say, let's take an across-the-board cut to your outside agencies as well as your departments, that's where we started with. So we said, if we were going to recover part of that revenue loss from the school system, the community college, Shepherd Library, and Council on Aging, which are the four big outside agencies you fund, that get their money in, say, 1/12 increments, you could recover about $440,000 of the shortfall by pulling 1% from the outside agencies. To look at our internal departments for the balance, plus to try and reserve fund balance, because we talked about, we had $3.5 million appropriated, and we should not appropriate more than about $2 million. That is an internal to our departments, because that was a decision of the board to appropriate fund balance. So I said, well, if we want to save a million five towards fund balance, and the $800,000 that we can't get from outside agencies, then we need to take about a $2.2 million savings on our internal departments. As we've said in the past, not all departments are created equally, and you can't just say, okay, across $107 million, let's take 2.25% or 2.3% or 2.4%. Because some things in your budget are not cuttable. Your payment to debt service is a guaranteed given, I can't find 2% to save there, because we budget exactly what's due to the banks. Your law enforcement officer's pension fund, you have to make the transfer to that. Your workers' comp fund transfer, your retiree health insurance transfer, there's not any way to save money on those sides. Your jail health contract, your medical examiner costs, your school security, which is fully funded with outside revenues. So I said, okay, if we have $107 million, and we net out all those things that we cannot cut, and we cannot take a savings in, how much of the budget is left to do the across-the-board cut to? And it's about a $97 million budget, once you net out all those departments that won't be able to return any savings to you. So if we need to save $2.2 million, which is your fund balance, your revenue loss, minus what you're going to hold back from your outside agencies, that portion of our budget, which could be returning funds at the end of the year of $97 million, it would take a 2.33% reduction in every department that has capacity to return funds. Finance, legal, planning, the board's budget, the sheriff's budget, buildings and grounds, all of those departments would have to constrain. I looked at it, including fund balance, because as we've talked in the workshop, fund balance is typically repaid at the end of the year with salary lag. And as you know, the manager's been holding positions vacant. But there's not enough savings in vacant positions to make up the whole loss. And so the departments have to return their vacant position money, as well as some portion of their operating money, to help us in in the best position possible at year-end. Does this ensure that you won't spend any fund balance? No. As we told you last week, we have four months of collections for sales tax this year. That's eight months that we don't know what might happen. And three of those months actually come post-June 30th. So you don't have any reaction time, because you accrue the July, the August, and the September payments back to the prior fiscal year, because they were actually paid in the stores, remitted to the state for April, May, and June sales, so they accrue backwards. So you have to make a best guess on whether the next eight months will bounce back, or may stay like they are. You are taking a quote "best guess" when you say, can the departments save 2.3% or 3% or 4% or less than that percentage in their savings, because every department's operation is different. We're just saying, right now, we know, unless something changes based on the trends, we are going to have the revenue shortfall. And if the departments trend their spending as they have in past years, we will overspend, and we will diminish fund balance at June 30. These type of actions, as one department said to me, as draconian as they may feel, may be the only way that you halt the bleeding and do as best you can to preserve. You know, fund balance at 12%, you heard Dave McCray talk about Fitch downgrading their rating. Fund balance at 12% won't get you a downgrade necessarily, but fund balance that was 17, that went to 14, that went to 12 and becomes 10, could very well get you a downgrade the next time you need to have the rating agencies look at you. Finances is just one piece of what they look at, but it is, it is when they see the downward trend in spending, even though we do it to avoid a tax increase in a tough economy, for them, the rating agencies see that you had the capacity to generate revenue, and we chose to spend savings instead. And we could very well see a negative outlook.
Okay, questions and comments, Mr. Garris?
Melanie, when we did the workshop back on the 26th.
Yes, sir.
The estimated fund balance number then, as of 6/30, was 12.02. Are you saying that by implementing these recommendations, that fund balance, that's the only way we're going to preserve the fund balance at 12.02?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if we don't implement these reductions, then that fund balance is going to be less than that, which means versus last year, it will go down another percent or two?
Yes, sir.
So, from my perspective, I don't think we have any choice but to implement these reductions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Webb?
Where are we at on that list of services and departments that we have that are mandated by the North Carolina Constitution and general statute?
We have a handout that Rebecca Troutman with the NCACC has put together, that should go out in your Friday pack this week.
Okay. And have you seen it?
She's used it for several years as an illustration.
What percentage of our budget do those things make up?
Very little. What is mandated is you must provide the service. What is discretionary is to what level you must provide the service.
How many services and departments do we have that are not mandated by statute, roughly?
Something like the farmer's market's not mandated, a finance department's not mandated, but you didn't have to hire somebody to pay the bills.
But that falls under general government, correct.
Right.
Land department.
Public health is mandated, but do we have to have it at the size we do? You know, the sheriff is mandated, but does it have to be at the size? And that's where the judgment comes in, is most of the functions are required to be performed, it's just, are we performing them at a superior level with an average revenue stream? And maybe we need to rethink the degree to which we do things.
I would agree. I think we really need to evaluate what we have to do versus what we like to do, and add in what we should be doing. And especially in a budget like this. I mean, we, I know just because of my background and things, and guys I talk to, the sheriff's office needs cars. And if we don't get them this year, you're going to double down for the next year, that may not be any better. And if one of them things comes apart, because they are required to go at speeds faster than normal sometimes, then we're going to be in a bind there, especially.
You've got home health nurses and social workers that drive every day, and will give you that same concern, because we replaced.
They're not pursuing felons.
Right, but we replaced cars two years ago, that got cut the current year. So if you go back to that chart we looked at about capital, you see $600,000, which is our normal, and then you see $600,000, which is in the unmet, which is the capacity we cut last year.
I think we also need, as was suggested, that we start outsourcing where we can save to anything we can outsource. Thank you.
Mr. Hammond?
If no department should be holding funds out for positions that are frozen, should they?
No, sir, the way our accounting system works is they're not allowed to spend it. Like, I have a vacancy right now, and that budget just stays there. I can't say, well, now that I don't have, you know, employee X, can I take that money and spend it on a vehicle, or can I take that money and travel more? That money, because Scott has frozen the position, sits there to revert at year-end. It's just whether or not there's enough to revert at year-end to cover your shortfall.
Okay, Mr. McGlaughorn and Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I know that we are calling in some tough economic times, Scott and Melanie. And I've talked to several county employees, and you know, one of the major concern is that we, you know, we want to keep jobs, we want to maintain jobs. You know, and I think it's critical that, you know, each department, really, Scott, look in terms of doing as much as they can do to curb the cost. I mean, you know, our fund balance is short, and we're looking at a tremendous shortfall. So I know you can't say what's fair, because some departments, like the sheriff's department, for an example, they have to have services 24/7 in case of emergency. But there are some services that I think that we have to critically look at and trim as much as possible. Because either you do that, and we don't want to think no way about raising taxes, I'm not for that. You know, I'm not wanting to see an extra burden on any citizen of Pitt County. But we're going to have to do something internally to trim this and make this process work.
Commissioner McGlaughorn? Excuse me?
Can I just, while the manager and I are cognizant of your desire to maintain positions, you need to remember that we are very personnel-driven. The bulk of our budget is people cost. And when, for the last two years, you're, to use Mr. Hammond, our outgoing expenses have exceeded our incoming revenue, then we have to make a systemic change. And we have taken vehicles, which was a big savings, we pulled out all the capital projects, which are big savings. You may be left to just the vacancies, or some field positions, or some restructuring of the way you offer those services, because the bulk of what we do, like if you were to look inside of my budget, it's a copier-rent agreement, it's postage to mail the checks. I don't have a lot of discretionary money, and a lot of the departments don't have a lot of discretionary money in order to be where we can save a significant amount of money. I mean, I think you will see the departments, after the manager reviews the budgets, have very tight operations. I'm just not sure it rises to the order of millions of dollars in savings without changing some of the personnel cost.
Mr. Owens, and then our manager wants to speak.
Melanie?
Just one minute, Mr. Owens, and then we'll get to you.
Melanie, the $444,400, has that already been transferred out?
No, sir, they, those agencies get their funding 1/12th a month. That hasn't been taken from them either.
That totality has not been transferred out.
No, sir.
Come on down to the next section. Kind of walk with me for the compensation of the next, how about? of the next, how about the, those next four transfers? Are they monthly also?
The transfers which say, like-
Like debt service or LE?
Well, the, the debt service happens twice a year because our payments are in November and April. So we haven't paid it yet, but I can't not pay it or we'll be in default.
I understand that. Now, the bottom line down there, tell me how that 96,000, or 96, is that a total of those figures up above?
That's our budget less those things that we cannot cut because a contract is in place. So that's the portion of your budget that's left that you could impose a cut upon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Hammond?
Yeah. Melanie, I was under the impression that if the position was frozen, the money was, the funds were frozen. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So there's nothing discretionary about that, is it?
No, sir.
I have one more question, but-
Okay.
When, when are these monthly payments being made that have not been made yet, based on Scott and your recommendations? When will they commence to cease paying them?
Well, that's kind of what we're before you for to, especially with the Board of Education, Pitt Community College, the library, and council and aging, as well as the other internal departments. I had met Friday with Dr. Emery, Dr. Massey, the library director, council and agent, we're meeting today. And I've also met with our larger departments, the sheriff, DSS, public health, just to have a discussion so they're not caught off guard that this is coming on your agenda, just as a discussion item, and hopefully with some, some action as well, that if the board were to do this, we will then administrate budget amendments. With the Board of Education, one strategy that I talked with Melanie as well as Dr. Emery, being that you do a capital appropriation of them of $750,000 above and beyond the current expense of about $30 million. That is done in two payments, in the fall and the spring.
A trade-off, is that what you're getting to?
Well, I mean, I told Dr. Emery, I said, we could not pass the, the 300 and-
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five thousand in the spring. That would not affect your current expense appropriation, which would then not affect your low wealth formula drawdown in dollars. But then, yes, you'll need to go to more likely your fund balance, and their fund balance is about 3.1 million dollars. And it's probably important to keep in mind that any fund balance the school system has, to my knowledge, and Melanie can correct me if I'm wrong, but the 3.1 million dollars is current expense, Pitt County dollars that have not been expended. Because federal dollars, I believe either you expend them, you send them back, state dollars, the same thing, grants and such. So, I mean, they do have fund balance, and they do have plans for the fund balance. But, I mean, we're talking about almost $400,000. My proposal would be to take it mostly from the, the current, the capital one, two, and three, not pay that, let them pull out of their fund balance. And then with Pitt Community College, we talked about a strategy for them, and, and the others are not such major amounts. Now, when you look at the internal departments within county government, again, these, what I just talked about, those agencies are only 1.1. We're only make, we're only asking them, asking, using a board to have them make up the difference in the loss of revenues. County departments are going to do twice that at 2.33 percent, because we're going to make the fund balance that was appropriated, as well as our percentage of the revenues that are not coming in. So I, I think it's prudent to go ahead and do this, because otherwise we're, as we face next year's budget process, I mean, things are going to be even tighter. I did talk to Dr. Emery and Dr. Massey about next year, and even some of the bigger departments. Showed them the, the summary table that I presented to you in the budget workshop, whether it's a $6.3 million total revenue loss due to revow if there's no adjustment in the rate, or it's a $2.5 million deficit if the, if the rate is adjusted somewhat. We're, we're in a deficit picture either way. One is more than the other. And even talked about the, some possible big picture scenarios as to what it could mean to them and a proportionate share, depending upon which, which road the, you as a governing board go down.
So the, excuse me. The one-twelfth or whatever will start in March by diminishing these figures that we, this board passes this today. Is that what you're telling me?
Well, again, we could take-
I know with the latitude of what you just said.
One-twelfth or, yes. Nothing's occurred to date.
Sorry.
Nothing's been hap-
Madam Chairman, can I just clarify your response to Mr. Owens' question, that if Scott's able to work it out by consent with the Board of Education, then that process can continue. If it's not by consent, there is, there are a few legal steps that must take place before any money can be withheld. And that requires the Board of Education appearing before this board, before official, before any money's withheld. There's a legal process.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Webb?
One, just two more quick things. Are there any departments that are currently not going to overspend if things continue?
None of the departments will overspend their budgets. What will happen is when your budget is 107 and your revenue comes in at 105, by virtue of spending their budget, they've still overspent the revenues that came in. So, I mean, they'll live within their means. They just, they're, they're, when you add all of that together, it's more than the incoming revenue.
And they've done a good job of that over the years.
If there is a situation where, I use the sheriff as an example, so we'll scenario him out. If they save in one area, can they not apply it to another area? Let's say, I don't know, they save $1,000 on office supplies, can they buy 20 guns if they need to?
At the end of the day, as long as they revert back the appropriate percentage, then they have the latitude to spend their budgets wherever they'd like. And that was, that was where we were going with this, is right now, because the manager cut off spending two weeks ago, I'm getting emails that say, can I buy 11 by 17 paper? Well, right now, the manager has said spending is done. No, you may not. If we get all the departments to come to some agreed-upon percentage of reversion, then whatever they have left, they have the latitude to manage as they need their operation. But they're managing a smaller, more constrained operation.
And hopefully that's where we're going to go. Right now, we're having to micromanage the departments and say, no spending, period. Like Melanie says, if we can identify the 2.33 percent within those departments, and then set that aside, and then pray that we will stay there, then I can tell the departments, okay, what you have left, we can lift the spending freeze because we'll anticipate not having to spend fund balance hopefully at the end of the year. If, if we can't, then we're going to have to maintain a spending freeze and lock everything down.
I just don't want to punish stewardship. If a department head, say James Rhodes or anybody, is, is way under, and they have some needs, I don't want to punish them because of the lack of revenues coming in. And so if there is the reversion, will the spending be freed up so that they can operate within what they have, with the adjusted figure?
Again, if, if we can meet for the totality of the overall organization, if the planning department says, I've met my goal, I can cut 5 percent, I can cut twice as much as you want, yet the overall organization, we're still not meeting that, that target or that goal, then we, we need every revenue source we can draw from, or expenditure reduction we can draw from.
I understand. But what I'm saying is, if, if we go through this, and this goal is now met, we're down to where we need to be budget-
Then what's left is flexible.
Okay.
Okay.
Melanie.
Yes, Mr. Hammond?
Am I, am I still basically correct when I say that when outgo exceeds income, upkeep become downfall?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Can, yes, Mr. McGlaughorn?
I just wanted to just make this one observation. You know, we talked about federal inmates. And I, I think the, you know, I try to keep up with the sheriff department, and, and they've been doing a good job in terms of bringing federal inmates in, into our county. One of the concerns that, not only the sheriff department, but any, any department, that, that brings a lot of revenue beyond the, the, the norm. Are we doing anything to, to incentivize those individuals, to give them some type of, of, of credit, and maybe to use some of their funds to, in other areas? I, I mean, I'm just concerned about, what are we doing to, to-
Commissioner McGlaughorn, if I can address that-
$340,000 does that, right up above that.
The, the sheriff's department and the detention center, we do have a fed bed contract. And this year, we needed at least 87 inmates on average per day for them to meet their revenue target for the, the number of fed beds, to help pay for the detention officers and heating and cooling and food and medical and so forth out there. They've been hitting a target probably well over 100 on average, which means is on the table. Right now, it's $340,000. I think the sheriff would even say by year end, he might have $550,000 over and beyond what was originally targeted. But you have to keep in mind that between the sheriff's office and the detention center, his overall budget total is over $27 million, which is part of that general fund, part of that $107 million general fund. He only brings in, in terms of fees and revenues, about $5 million. So there's still $22 million worth of his overall operation totality that is being funded by ad valorem taxes, sales taxes, and so forth. If he were to cover 100% of those, and then come to you and say, I'm making 340 or, or half a million dollars above and beyond, like I said, we need every revenue source or every expenditure reduction in every direction that we can get to balance the overall budget scenario.
I think you've done a good job here.
I think it's excellent. You want to do my question? Any other questions? Okay?
Madam Chairman, I'm not so interested in the specific details of how you're going to do this. I'm not interested in this, as a board member, micromanaging each department, micromanaging each section that we allocate the dollars to. What I am interested in is to make sure that we do not reduce that fund balance anymore. And you are telling me that in order to assure that, the best possible assurance of that is for us to approve these reductions. Therefore, I make a motion that we adjust the budgets to approve these reductions in this year's budget.
Second motion.
Okay. Any other coming up? Okay. Let's vote.
Raise hands or we can-
We can ask them. I think while we're waiting for the vote to finish, I think what you all have said to some of us in meeting with the departments and meeting with the schools and PCC, nobody likes to be told the allowance has been reduced, or they're going to have to reduce it. But I think the fact that they don't have to give it all back, and that they're going to be, because if everybody participates, there will be money left for all to spend. Instead of us saying, you can't spend any more money in this area, you can't, then they can make the decision as to how they're going to spend what's left. And I think that's important for each one of those groups to be able to do that. Thank you. Okay? And our next items for the-
That won't, that won't reduce the fund balance?
That's right.
If there's some money left and-
Yes, sir. That's our, that's the plan they've come up with. So, thank you. Faye Taylor and James Rhodes, or just James Rhodes? Not that it's just James Rhodes, James Rhodes.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman. Ms. Taylor will come up. She is here. Ms. Faye Taylor with Martin Community Action is here this morning to discuss proposed grant application that's to assist families not only within Pitt County, but also Beaufort and Martin County. But particular to Pitt County, the grant application that's being proposed to the Department of Health and Human Services to provide assistance to 50 families in Pitt County that are living below poverty, poverty here. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Taylor to provide all the details. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. How you doing? All right. My name is Faye Taylor, and I'm this community service block grant director. And I'm here today to share some information about the monies that will be spent here in Pitt County. The budget, the total budget is $679,640. And 65% of that budget is spent in Pitt County. And it's based on the poverty in each county, Martin, Pitt, and Beaufort. And Beaufort, and Pitt County get 65% of the funds. This year, we'll be working with 100 families. 65 of those, 65% of that 100 will be here in Pitt County. There are five staff people housed here in Pitt County at the office of ECBC building on State and Road. Now, the comprehensive service that we will be dealing with this year is, the ultimate goal is employment. And that's the self-sufficiency program. Under the self-sufficiency program, under that umbrella, we service the needs of the families. In order for you to be on the program, you have to be enrolled in the program to receive our services. And we work with the total family needs. We work with them to help them to become self-sufficient. I know that's a big word, but what I want to say, we give them a head start in life. Under that umbrella, it be served housing, education, transportation, medical assistance, any assistance that's going to build that family to the point that they'll be able to stand on their feet. That's what we do under self-sufficient. But the ultimate goal is to get jobs, because you know, without a job, you cannot function. And, and so that is the ultimate goal of the self-sufficiency program.
Okay. Any questions or comments anyone would like to make? Yes, Mr. McGlaughorn?
Having served on that board, I'm familiar with what Ms. Taylor is doing, and tremendous fine job that they are doing for the citizens of Pitt County. As you mentioned, 65%, 65 families from Pitt County would be affected out of 100. So that's saying a lot for the citizens of Pitt County. So I, I certainly support this and move that. That's in form of a motion that we do accept this and approve this.
Second.
Okay. Do we just accept the review?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Let's vote, please.
You've been a positive one.
Okay. Mr. Elliott, we have appointments to board coming up?
Yes. We will look at page 76 for the Animal Control Advisor Board. The Animal Control Advisor Board is recommending to take an existing seat on the board that was supposed to be a staff, that is a staff person, that has been vacated, and they're recommending that be changed to an at-large position. They're recommending that James Woodley, an applicant for this position, be appointed to that seat.
Madam Chairman, I serve on that board, and I'd move that we appoint James Woodley.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay. Let's vote, please. Mr. Smith, if you'll get, oh, you do. Okay.
Do we need to do anything to formally change that to an at-large seat instead of a staff person?
I'm not sure, Madam Attorney.
This was done as a nomination. If you would want to include that in the form of a motion and receive a second, then we can roll that all into one.
I'd also ask that we change that from staff, I make a motion that we change that from a staff person to an at-large seat.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Let's vote.
If there is support by way of a second.
You've made a motion, I'll second.
And we need Mr. Hammond to vote on, first on the nomination. Okay. And now you may vote on that motion.
Okay. This is to change it to at-large?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Elliott?
Okay. Next, you have a abstract to inactivate the breastfeeding advisor council. You'll see there's a letter there from Dr. Morrow, basically recommending this. He's saying that this-
Excuse me?
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask you something. So, am I looking at the right one?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Next item, item three, to inactivate the breastfeeding advisory council. You'll see a letter attached to that abstract from Dr. Morrow, basically saying that this has been replaced by the Regional Lactation Steering Committee, and that is why this committee is advisory board, or advisory council is being asked to be inactivated.
Motion to approve the decision to inactivate the breastfeeding advisory council.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote. And the next one, appointment to Pitt County Child Fatality Prevention Team.
Yes. On this one, Tracy Patterson has resigned from this prevention team, and Dr. Morrow and Jennifer Smith are recommending Susan Butler to replace Ms. Patterson.
Motion to appoint Susan Butler.
Any of them? Let's vote. Okay. And next is the appointment to the PCMH Board.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, for me, we have trustees appointed on that board. As far as I know, I've never seen them. Don't know who they are, but yet, they represent all those citizens of Pitt County. And I know you've got one coming up, and I'm not, certainly not opposed to that, but I think that we as county commissioners, leaders in this- that, but I think that we, as county commissioners, leaders in this county, ought to take and to meet with these people, at least know who they are. Because they're supposed to represent, at the same time, they represent the hospital, but they have to represent the citizens of Pitt County. That's the reason I'm there. And I don't know how to go about it, or you want to put on a committee, but I personally would like to say, "I know that person." And if we're not doing our job, we might as well face it.
Okay. I think, can we just, what do we need to do? Do we need a committee, or could we have our group here? Yes, Ms. Owens, yes.
I think Gene has probably got some merit to what he's talking about. But Mr. Flowers, who was from District Four, has served on this term, and I've, after getting this notice of the recommendation from, from the people for Mr. Satterwhite, I personally had an interview with Mr. Satterwhite, talked with him. He's been over and talked with the hospital people. He's talked with former boards of it, and he's been, he is a good asset to it. And I'd like to make a motion for us to appoint him, and if Gene wants to commit here, I concur with you, Gene.
Well, let me go on a little bit further.
We have a motion. Can I have a second? Okay.
Madam Chair.
We, it is very important, I think, that we know these people. They're not representing Bumble, they're representing the entire Pitt County. When we did this, this was the thing that we demanded that Pitt County would have the majority of the votes. But I want to ask any of you here, how many of you have even talked about it?
Everyone I've ever talked to, I've talked about it.
I have always known the people before.
Well, you know them, but what's that philosophy? I know what it's been. Who are you kidding?
Can I just say one thing? I think many of us, and I may be wrong on this, but I think that many of us generally respond to the request of people on this board who make recommendations, for whatever reason. Now, I have not always voted for those people, because I had someone else in mind. Most of the time, for most boards, the people will call us and talk to us, not necessarily. But I'll be glad, Mr. James, to get the attorney and Mr. Elliott to look kind of at the policy and the way we've been going about this, and see if there's any way we can incorporate something like that.
We can do it, because we're in control.
Okay, well, I'm...
I know if we can.
Okay, well, we're going to look into it, like you requested.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Webb, and then Mr. McGlaughlin.
I'd have a substitute motion, in that the explanation is, I trust what you said about Mr. Satterwhite and Mr. Owens' assessment of him. My substitute motion would be that we, the chairman does form a committee to interview people for board appointments on our larger boards, such as trustees and ABC, but that also, in the substitute motion, that we include an approval for Mr. Charles Satterwhite, as well, based on the interview from Mr. Owens and Ms. Ward. But that, that committee formed to review board appointments.
And that, that was kind of what I was saying. Would you like to have a commissioner serve on that board? Would you like to include that, that committee? Like I said, the attorney and the manager and one commissioner?
Yes.
To bring back a report to us?
Yes.
Okay. I will do that. Okay, that's the motion, and there's a second. Okay, now we'll hear from Mr. McGlaughlin before we vote.
Yeah, we, we currently, in place, have, on these boards, representative from the county commissioner. I serve on the board as trustee of the hospital, you serve on the board of trustee as a liaison, Ms. Madam Chair. You know, and I think that along, along with what you're saying, I don't have a problem in doing that, but I think that Mr. James is correct, that we, we need to have some concern as to this board being comfortable with, with what, with what we, the process that we're doing. But we, we do have, have some input, as it, as it is now. But a committee, I, I don't have a problem with that, having that to be as part of what you're recommending, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hammond, and then we'll vote.
When I met with the manager, I told him, "We need a meet and greet session, period." Because there was a lot of new people elected to serve on town boards and all in November's election that don't know us, and we don't need to know them. And we need to start with the municipalities, and invite them to come, and, and let's have a meet and greet session with them, so we will, will, will at least know each other's name, if we don't know nothing else.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammond.
Madam Chairman, we may be at the next meeting to decide which boards that committee will review, because it's not necessarily for everyone.
Right, and that should be part of the report, I hope. So, if you will, well, let's vote on it first. I'll in favor of the motion to establish a committee, and one commissioner, and the attorney, and the manager, and for Bynum Satterwhite to be the newly elected representative. And then I'll ask you, Mr. Webb, if you'll be willing to serve with the attorney and the manager. Thank you. Okay, we have an appointment to Shepherd Memorial Library?
Yes, you have, Greg Needham is recommending, the library director, that Mr. Jesse Hinton be appointed to replace the recently deceased Joanne Lewis, Mrs. Shepherd Memorial Library Board of Trustees.
Make a motion that we appoint Mr. Jesse Hinton.
Okay. Say the name again.
Jesse Hinton.
Okay. Is that what you asked? A second?
You didn't need to nominate it, or we need a second.
Okay. All right. Any other nominations? Okay, let's vote, please, on Mr. Hinton. Mr. James? Okay, all right. The next item is a closed session?
Yes.
Then we have another one, Terry Adkinson.
Okay, do we have another one? What, for the hospital board?
No, no, for the Shepherd Memorial Library, too.
Yes, he has.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
He is correct.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Needham is also recommending that Ms. Terry Adkinson be appointed to replace Mr. Erickson, who has not eligible for reappointment.
Motion to appoint Terry Adkinson.
Okay. All right, let's vote. Okay, now, is that it? Okay, we'll go to closed session?
It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, three to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and also under 143-318.11A4, to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, and also under 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Second, anybody? Okay, let's vote. And I'm requesting an eight-minute recess, and we'll be right back.
Thank you.
Welcome back after our closed session. I think we have one item of business.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve, as to the content only, the closed session minutes from December 19th.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. And now, we will all go around and see if there are any commissioner comments, Ms. Owens?
I just want Mr. James to know what the bid on the Third Street School is now.
Oh, man, I can't believe that.
Has it surpassed $150,000? Mr. James?
Do you know how much it is?
I read it in the paper. I don't know if it's more.
$50,000, right.
That's not enough.
It's not enough, all right. I have no comments.
I think it is. Okay, Mr. McGlaughlin?
No comments.
I'm going to take just one second, all of you. I brought one of these folders. I know everybody got an invitation to go to the 10th Annual Give Kids a Smile Day at Jasper Lewis and Lee Lewis's dental group, where lots and lots and lots of dentists from the eastern part of North Carolina were there, taking care of children who needed dental care and could not afford it. Some of them have never been to a dentist. This was the largest group they have ever had. And if you have not been in the past, whether you are a commissioner or a citizen, it's something that you should go visit. It's a wonderful, happy day for these children and these parents. And they got the churches involved, the community involved, because the dental assistant that worked with the school systems was not funded for the last couple of years, and that's usually what they went through. But when they reached out to all the citizens in the community, it grew just five and tenfold. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
No comment.
Mr. Garris? Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I continue to attend the school board meetings. The, I, I believe that the school board and the superintendent and staff are engaged in important decision-making, and I also attended the pending ceremony for the nationally certified teachers. And these, these folks were happy to attain that status. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Mr. Hammond? Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I see that, that land at Third, Third Street School now has, has certainly got, got, got interest in those bids, all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Green was in the last, and our December 19 meeting, he was telling Superintendent Emery that for land downtown, that to accept the bids that have been made, upset bids have come in from $50,000 and gone beyond $120,000 now.
Yes, sir. Mr. Webb?
I attended my first library board meeting since being appointed there this year, and they're doing a great job. They are stretching nickels into dollars. And we're going to have some needs we have to address with them. The bookmobile is getting close to repayment time, or replacement time. But they're doing a fine job over there delivering library services throughout the county, and I appreciate the work they're doing, and glad to be on the board.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, let's vote, please.
Thanks.
Thank you. Melanie?